Good evening, I'd like to call the order. The September 12th meeting of the Woodland Park Planning Commission, roll call please.
Chair Hertzfield.
Here.
Vice Chair Brown.
Here.
Don DeZellum is absent, Jared Newcomb.
Here.
Ken Kennedy.
Here.
Larry Larson.
Here.
Don Hoyne.
Here.
And Cole Middleton is absent.
Very good, you start me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is a flag of the United States of America. And it is a republic for which we stand, we're a nation and we're God's into this law with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Approval of minutes, commissioners all had opportunity to review. Any comments or clarifications to be proposed? Saying none. Yes, so. Asked to vote to approve the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I, I didn't vote, I was, I was absent last time.
Thank you. Well, on tonight's agenda, we have public hearings. In our first case, and only case, is the extension of U-Pass self-storage conditional use permit and site plan review. Request by M3XP2 LLC. So for tonight's hearing, we will have staff presentation, questions from the commission at that point. I invite the applicant and the representatives to come forward and make a presentation or statement. We'll have comments and questions from the commission. And then open it to public hearing, anyone online or in the audience who wishes to speak on the issue, we'll have them. Approve the public hearing, give the applicants and representatives opportunity to respond. Have deliberation up here and move forward with a vote. With that being said, staff have a presentation?
Thank you, Jay. Yep, thanks Chair. So yeah, as stated, this is an extension of the U-Pass, which is formerly known as Woodland Park Self-Storage, CUP and SPR. So this, the site is a 4.75 acre parcel of land, which is west of I-25 and south of Trill Road. In the southeastern portion of Woodland Park. The subject property is zone of service commercial, as you guys can see here on this slide. Access to the site is on the north of the property via Trill Road. Woodland Village Mobile Home Park is located to the southeast and the Woodland Park Saddle Club property is located to the north. The parcel bordering subject property to the northeast is owned by the city of Woodland Park. Right here where my mouse is, and this is where the city of Woodland Park currently has one of their lift stations. This slide is a couple of views from Highway 24, so the top view is the view of the property traveling eastbound. And the bottom picture is the view traveling westbound. On July 19th of 2018, the city council approved a conditional use permit and site plan review. Request to allow for a 72,400 foot, square foot self-stored facility on the 4.75 acres. Here on this slide is the approved site plan from 2018. Also from that 2018 approval, this is the approved rendering of the north elevation. Since the original approval of the CUP, there has been several extensions of the entitlement and some activity revolving around the development. The next two slides outline the activity that have been taking place since July of 2018. In February of 2019. The slide outlines that the applicant did submit for a commercial ZDP and grading permit, which were never approved. In January of 21, the applicant requested their first extension request, along with a waterline infrastructure permit, which was also never approved or constructed. The applicant received approval of their first extension in March of 21, and again in July of 22. For their second request. On July 18th of this year, the applicant requested their third extension request. Extensions of conditional use permits are governed by section 18.57 of the Woodland Park Code and can be extended for two years at a time. If the applicant, if this application is approved, then the CUP and SPR approvals will expire on July 18th of 2026. The application was referred to everyone here listed on this slide, and my next few slides are some comments we've received. The Woodland Park Utilities Department stated that they do not support this request due to the inactivity of the application regarding the infrastructure. And also the potential impacts of the development would have to the parcel to the south. The Woodland Park's Public Works Department made two comments regarding necessary improvements to Fountain Creek and CDOT access. Core Electric commented that they approve of the extension, but the applicant will still need to meet all requirements from Core Electric. And lastly, CDOT submitted a comment letter, which was after the staff report went out to you, so that's why you guys have the full CDOT comment letter in front of you tonight. And they commented that the applicant would need to provide an updated traffic impact study, drainage report, and an access permit will be required. And staff's findings, as there are no regulations to assess, staff does not have a position or recommendation on this extension request. If the planning commission finds that the extension is warranted, then the planning commission should recommend that city council. Grant the two-year extension of the conditional use permit and site plan, with the approving resolution clearly stating that the development is still subject to all the conditions and dimensional standards specified within the original approval. This concludes my presentation. We also have some applicants, the applicants in the audience today, if you guys want to have them come up, or if you have any questions, please let me know.
All right, well, before we proceed further, I want to disclose that I was involved in this project back in 2017, early 18. As an architect, I did some preliminary design work for that. I have not been involved in the project since then. When this place has come before us, the planning commission before, I did recuse myself on those occasions. However, I'm comfortable moving forward as I no longer have any financial interest in this project, and I feel I can. Review it without bias, so unless there's any concerns from the commission, I propose to stay involved tonight's meeting. All right, thank you. Anyways, now we can take questions from the mission for staff.
Yeah, just, I think it'd be helpful before they give their presentation, help clarify just some of the comments that in the pre-presentation there. There's talk about impacts to the parcel to the south. Be interested to know what those.
Sure.
Might be and what the concern is. And then clearly kept raised issues. Both water and also with the inactivity of the water line, so.
Sure.
What you could do to. Give a little more depth and background, that I think would be very helpful and would also help in their presentation.
Yeah, so I'm going to talk about the parcel to the south first, so this is the aerial photo of the parcel to the south. What the utilities director was referencing is Woodland Village Mobile Home Park. The planning department has received, I think, a few separate applications regarding a redevelopment of that parcel. Those development applications have not gone to planning commission and are currently not moving forward. So with that redevelopment, with the density increase that those previous applications were proposing. A secondary access to the parcel to the south was needed, and that was like CDOT's requirements and fire requirements. So in those specific plans, like I said, I want to make it clear that those are not in action right now, but they have happened. In those plans, the parcel to the south would have to have some sort of access to Trill Road. You know, one rendering was an access from the subject property or from Trill Road through the subject property. And another access actually encroached on the Woodland Park property where the lift station was, and. It got as far as going to the Utilities Advisory Committee, which they denied that request. So as far as the parcel to the south, that's, that's what the Utilities Director was referencing.
And so from the plans I see, I think it's fair to say that access road through the site zone here is not viable.
Unless the site plan were to change, correct? We, yeah, we'd have some setback issues and that sort of thing, so. And then as far as the water line goes, just had some, this is the comment letter, or the comment sheet that the applicant received. So if you guys can see my mouse here, this is where the water line is proposed to be. And that water line is going to have to be bored under Highway 24. So as far as the tough positioning, I think the comment was from the Utilities Department, I think that was really towards the parcel to the south and the Woodland Village Mobile Home Park. And then as far as the inactivity goes, this is what he was referencing as, you know, no further ZDPs were applied for, for this water line bore under Highway 24.
Questions?
Couple of questions to clarify, CDOT comment, is it, am I reading it correctly? I just saw it obviously a few minutes ago.
Yeah.
There is currently no access from Trill Road, so the traffic impact, this will be from zero to whatever it is, it's not an incremental impact that's being looked at in some way. And, and so they'll need to get approval for Trill Road and then get a, and assess this. This traffic to decide what the characteristics of that.
Yeah.
Access point.
Yeah, exactly. I believe that's the way CDOT reviewed this application. And again, that's all work that the applicant would have to do with CDOT.
Okay.
In order to gain an access permit, so.
All right. Let me ask one point, which there's some history of this too, which. It's found a little bit bothersome to just mention.
Can you speak up?
If you would concur, if this is accurate. My recollection, seeing the dates too, it seems to be consistent. The first extension of this was six, was requested six months after the. Permission had expired. So at the time, as I recall, it was somewhat controversial, in fact, it was a vote by a vote of four to three that the first extension was even granted in the first place.
And I think part of the rationale at that point in time was it was either in the middle or right after all of the COVID chaos. So that was, as my understanding, part of what factored into that decision and the late application.
And that was just some of the history, because I'm going to listen very carefully to what's said tonight, because we're talking about a third extension to talk in a situation when our. City Utilities Director and Engineer have had question concerns about it, to understand how those might relate to some other usage of this. One other thing just to keep in mind when we're doing this review, maybe CJ or maybe Karen can help as well. The standards for giving a conditional use permit are fairly extraordinary in the, in our ordinance. Just so we all recall what we're talking about. Says the standards for conditional use permits are intended only as minimum necessary for review. An application for a conditional use permit, even though meeting the minimal standard of this chapter and code may be denied, it was determined that development is not in the best interest of the city. And then the further subdivision below that the proposed development and use shall have a demonstrated direct need to be located at the location proposed. And provide adequate mitigation measures to lessen all identified impacts. Can just the staff have any view on how the standards involve issuing a conditional use permit compared to those for giving extension? Obviously, they're not required to start fresh with new application and whole new documents. But what's the difference in what we should be looking at when we're revealing the extension compared to an initial grant? Because it is, it is such an extraordinary kind of grant for conditional use permit as indicated.
Yeah, as far as code is concerned regarding CUP extension requests, I mean, here on the slide is, is what our code gives us. And you know, as you guys know, for other, if, if the applicants were coming in for a brand new CUP, then typically staff has a recommendation. So since there's no. Code to assess the application with, that's why in these instances, the last two meetings we've had, we don't give a recommendation, so.
The reason I asked, because the expiration provision doesn't, it said sort of things that can happen to allow an ex, an expansion. But it gives no hint of what the factors were going to decide whether or not those conditions should have actually happened. Okay, well, just a thought to keep in mind when we're reviewing things. Because there's nothing in the code about. It's from what I'm seeing, there's no like, okay, you have five extensions and that's it. And then you have to just.
There's no, there's no cap.
There's no cap.
Yeah, you all have typically requested the extension request comes in, at least the application comes into the planning office. Prior to the CUP actually expiring. And then there's been other projects where you have certainly talked about what progress of any or any activity has been happening over that prior. Or since the last extension or since the initial authorization of the permit, what, what activity or progress has the applicant made during that period of time? So those are things that you all have looked at previously in terms of considering extensions.
And just to be clear, did this application for attention come in prior to the expiration?
Yeah, a couple of days, two days before.
Okay, yeah, like the CUP expired on July 19th of 2024, and we received a complete application on the 18th.
One day.
So yeah, it was before.
Um, back to. Kent's point. So, you know, whether or not a conditional use is appropriate and in the best interest. I had planned to go there, so I apologize for not having the research to fully ask this question, but. If not a conditional use under the zoning, where, how would one get a storage unit business zoned and approved? Is there, is there quote unquote a different or more applicable zone, or is this as good as it gets? And it just happens to require initial use, question mark.
Let's check the use table for you, just bear with us for a minute.
And let me make sure we know what question you're asking, so you're saying if this gets denied, what's the next steps for the applicant?
No, I'm just saying, because you know.
Is there a zone for which this is a permitted?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you, that's a much cleaner way to ask my question.
Section, section V of the use table deals with commercial warehousing, storage and self-storage warehouses. And it has some conditional, conditional in CC, SC and CBD, you know, CC and SC. And PC in HSCLI and PUD. So the main ones are CC and SC.
It's where it belongs.
It's in one of the, it's SC.
All right.
But then like. It's where it's permitted, I mean, it's.
And just like Lee just said, there are additional criteria for conditional use permit. That has to be reviewed, and that was, at the first time, first chair in the witness, actually.
Larry. You're really quiet. Thank you.
The, I had a comment dealing with the comments that we received, CDOT and from. Utilities and from Public Works. If I recall correctly, those comments were presented to us at the very beginning back in 2018. I know you guys probably don't remember that. Lee, Ken, do you remember that discussion that we had with the particular concerns at that time?
I believe there were some conditions in that.
So there aren't really new concerns. And I know we're really putting you on the spot to say yes or no, but I think that's important, you know.
But all the conditions from the initial approval would still apply if there were to be extended.
Correct. Yeah, from that, from that original ordinance from 2018, which is ordinance 1330, so.
And just from what we just got, just for the meeting here from CDOT. Mentions draining to the state highway, state highway right of way should not exceed the undeveloped historical rate of flow. Given, let's say we're going to. pave and root for about. Three acres, I mean, there's, it's definitely going to be increasing runoff, but. Since it's below the grade of the highway, does that even?
I think the applicant does have their engineer with them today, so I think that'd be a great question.
Okay.
Any other comments this time, first time?
Are we going to get an update on any progress that's been made since the last extension, because I know.
Well, I think I can come forward, some, something to say, certainly have that opportunity to ask them to address that.
Great.
Hopefully they're taking good news. Ask questions.
Well, very good. That being said, we'll ask the applicant for their representatives to come forward. Name and address, please, and then Michael Harper, 1493 County Road 782, Woodland Park. I stood here two years ago, asking for a very similar extension. And as you all know, the. The fact that we really can't ignore was, at that time, was the COVID incident. And the disruption that it caused, not only in. Just social disruption, but it also caused a great disruption in the supply chains. It. Made projects stagnant for months and years. Because not only was that all disruptive, but from a financing perspective. And a way forward in that respect relied really on the cost of the project. And since that time, and since the approval of our last. Conditional use permit, we proceeded once again with seeking financing. And because of all the things that I just mentioned, it caused the cost of that project to be. Not. Not a project that was especially. Useful in finding financing. As a matter of fact, the financing rates, since we first applied and had our business plan in place, have tripled. So in terms of being able to do a project. In the last two years, that was planned based on a certain cost and cost of financing. We fell short in being able to get financing for that. So. Let me just address what has taken place in the last two years in terms of what we have done. And the. The unfortunate thing about development is you get to a certain point in your plan and your development and. Exactly what you're going to do on a timeline. And if you don't have financing, you don't spend money. It becomes money that we already have some costs into the project. And you have to do that up to a certain point, and that's when you make your applications. And I'm sure you've heard this before, but. A developer doesn't go past a certain point without solid financing, knowing exactly where they're going to. To go. From the first day that they have funding. So the, the. Last thing that I will say before inviting questions from you. Is we found ourselves in a position that we thought the project was not going to be possible at all. And even three months ago, we still did not have a solid plan for financing. And the intention at that point and the reason for the late resubmission. Of extension is because we have now been approached by a buyer. That has assured us that they can. Accomplish this project, they have a solid plan. They are in the storage industry and building. And. So I will introduce. The buyer here upon you having a chance to ask me questions. And then let you hear why this project can move forward. So I would invite your questions at this point.
Just one procedural thing, is it possible for the applicant to be shown on camera? Usually he has an opportunity with speaking to be shown, if that's. You can flip, can you, can you have the camera so that the applicant's lectern is within the field of view, just if he's speaking?
If you, if you look at the screen, he's in the lower right, his back is in the lower right hand corner.
If you give Grant a few minutes, he can play around.
Okay.
But, but that's the purpose of that particular frame, is it at least catches, somebody's at the podium. Not optimal, but.
Okay, that's where we're at.
Thank you for a smile.
You would need to change cameras, Grant. Thank you for the training exercise. No pressure, Grant.
The show must go on.
Well, I guess we can have the other representatives come forward, and we can ask Michael questions at this time. Do you have anything to discuss, the applicant?
I mean, I think the big question is going to be on everyone's mind is, you got a long road to hope, getting all the plants, permits and water access, so. How does that play out in terms of the period of the conditional use permit extension you're requesting? In other words, when would you break ground, when would you expect to complete, things like that?
Sure, and that's a valid question, and I will let. The buyer who will actually make those advances and be able to give you a timeline.
All right, thanks.
Else this time?
I have a comment to make. Certainly, you know, very good reasons and justifications for why it's been delayed and delayed. But during this time, have you had any further discussions with city utilities or public works or CDOT about their concerns? How those can be addressed?
No, we have not. There, we felt like the. The project was approved based on what we presented at that time. And so we went as far as we felt like was necessary and what was asked for at that time. So we made no further advancements until we knew we had plans.
Understood.
Okay, let's move forward and. Okay. Have the buyer come forward, you can introduce them and. Exactly. I would like to introduce Lee Frederick. He is the buyer that I've spoken of. And the engineer from Matrix is Eric Smith, and he can address. And the other comments that are technical and associated with the project, so I'd like to invite them to come forward.
Good evening, I'm Lee Frederick, I reside at 622 Vista Grande, Colorado Springs, 80906. I'm with Uplift Development Group, CJV1.
Yeah, and leave that, the clicker right there, if you hit the down arrow, it should go to the next slide.
Okay, awesome. Well, I, I won't regale you too much with my company, but I just want to give you a background that we are people that specialize in self-storage development. And we get a lot of this stuff built, so.
Uh, you made a.
These guys can vouch for me, it wasn't working.
I just call next.
Okay, move along, please, okay. So yeah, we, we are a fully integrated development company by that, we do all of our own entitlement work in-house. We also have a general contracting company, GYS, General Contracting, and we have our own steel company, Grand Mars Steel, so we're able to. Come up with pricing. come up with pricing and we can deliver. Uh, in addition to that, we run all of our own properties, uh, when we get those built. So, uh, you can see just in terms of our growth, uh, that we've, you've gone from basically, uh, I want to say we had seven facilities in twenty fifteen and then we maxed out in twenty twenty-two at fifty seven facilities. We enrolled our assets into a publicly traded company, NSA, uh, which is a Denver-based, uh, publicly traded REIT. And then, uh, as of July, they had bought us out, so we're back to being independent. And we have, uh, currently eighteen properties in our portfolio to go on. So in, in terms of, just to, to let you know that we can handle the volume, uh, you know, basically, you know, we've deployed two hundred and thirty-six million dollars in capital. Uh, and that's typically in about a sixty, sixty-five percent loan to value, loan to cost. So, uh, when it comes to one of the primary issues of the previous developers, we are able to source capital and are able to proceed. Currently, we have, uh, four, uh, projects, uh, under development. One actively under construction in Austin, Texas, at Goodnight Ranch, which is a, uh, master plan development year down there. It's crazy, crazy requirements and we're able to satisfy that. So we're, uh, confident and prepared to deal with specific needs of different, uh, communities. So, uh, that's, you, you can flip through and we can see a few pictures of what we do, so keep going CJ, please. Okay, so here's one in Oakland Park, Kansas, that we built a multi-story, uh, with the, uh, Declaran being, uh, Costco. So we've had to deal with a bunch of lawyers for a bunch of time and we, we got that done. All right, go ahead. Beach Hut is Houston, Texas market, uh, totally different set. They, they have no cloning there, so the challenges that one faces in those markets are, are substantial, but very different. We handled that fine. Go ahead. Preston, Lawrence, Kansas, again, smaller community college town, uh, different stringent requirements that, go ahead. And sixty-third, this was a, uh, big insurance company that had, uh, vacated their building and it had sent vacant for, uh, a little over fifteen years and we converted that and expanded. So, uh, anyway, that, that, that should give you an idea that we are capable of, uh, delivering on a project. This, a- as it relates to this project, this is the era of broken deals. This is where we are in the economic cycle. We're under contract in San Antonio, Texas with the deal that was looking great for a long time and then it fell apart and we picked that up. Uh, we're working on one in San Ten Valley, which is Greater Phoenix Market, uh, this project. Uh, one of our projects is up in Fort Collins and we're, uh, year three in developing that project. So, uh, the self-storage is ready to go just as soon as the master planner gets their act together. And it's incredibly difficult. Nationally, uh, to get through entitlement, self-storage averages a little over five hundred days. Uh, when, when I started doing this back in ninety-nine, it was about forty-five days. So the, under the best circumstances, this is a very lengthy process. So, uh, you know, o- obviously I'm sympathetic to the seller, but this is far from exceptional from what we're seeing, uh, across the country in our development. So, uh, I, I'm here as an interested party. We're prepared to go to LOI and contract immediately, uh, uh, if the extension is granted. And so, uh, that, that's, that's my interest, uh, and I'm happy to take questions.
Could you, could you tell me, sir, if, um, are you familiar with the site plan that had been presented? Is that, is, is that compatible with your division for the development of this property as, as it was submitted?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, very similar concern, but maybe ask a question, or just slightly differently. It seems like a new developer coming in. I would expect a lot of changes to, to the, to the plan and how it's gonna be built. It's, it's encouraging to see the weight of this company and their, and that this is what you do. I mean, in, in terms of the viability of the project, so that's very encouraging. What's potentially discouraging is, are we really gonna follow the development plan, the se- the plan of originally approved and extended multiple times? Or is this, there's just gonna be sort of a veneer over a completely new project?
Very fair question, and in your position, that's exactly the question I'd be asking. And we have run the numbers on this and our pro forma works with this footprint. Typically, we're doing, uh, multi-story projects. But, you know, without going into too much detail, our project in, uh, in Austin, at Goodnight Ranch, you know, our, our land costs were a multiple of five of, of this project. So because of our land cost here, we're able to build, uh, single story and we're able to get adequate square footage in order to make it work. You know, one of the, the big issues that makes us successful is because we're vertically integrated, we can, uh, take a slightly less profit on the GC side and take slightly less profit on the steel. Still making money, don't worry, uh, but we don't have to get max dollar on every single component at every single part of the game. We're also able to eat, uh, high debt service coverage for a while. So whereas a, a smaller private group would get brutalized by, uh, an eight and a half percent interest rate, we're gonna be able to go in and take a floating number and pay for that for an amount of time. And then as rates start going down, we'll ride that down and, and our upside will be there. So these are the, the dynamics that make it possible for a group like ours to do it. So, uh, and, and just a- as a aside, our capital group i- is, uh, based out of Colorado Springs and, and comprises nine hundred or so just regular front range folks, for the most part, front range. And they will be our investors on this deal.
So, so what I think I got from that was you're agreeing, willing to stay within the footprint of the original plan, but I would expect all new plans to be submitted, is that a fair, is that a fair expectation?
Uh, I, uh, we will submit whatever's needed to. We don't make any extra money for additional plans, so the more that we can use, uh, the current plans, the better. And we've worked with Eric and I've worked with, uh, Eric and, and Matrix on other projects in Colorado Springs and so.
I'll wait, I'll wait for Eric to come in.
Yeah, so, so
All right, thank you.
With, with that being said, yeah, the, the less we have to do to change it, the better and the quicker we can get going. So the deployed capital is not just sitting around burning. So, yeah, we're, we're ready to go.
Just a comment, I want you to be aware, as the new owner of this property in this project, the city is currently looking at updating our development codes. And one of the things we, we, we are looking at is one of the same regarding extensions, explorations, so on and so forth. So there may be no rules two years from now, if you're, if you're not moving along, so keep on moving forward.
Yeah, well, by, by all means, and this is one of the, the important components of our company is because we do have our, our own general contractor and our own steel, we are able to deploy quickly. And we're, you know, able to, to hedge on steel prices and shipping. So i- i- it's just a really good fit. And our investors love local projects. So, a- and, and it's very difficult to, to come up with local projects. So, a- and, and we're building this one, the, the, the numbers on this project look good. Historically, looking at their information from three years ago, and it just looks better today.
A couple of questions on the architecture, just, uh, because the building that's shown in the rendering packet is actually a two-story building, if I recall?
It is split level.
Split level. Is the exterior architecture anticipated to be the same, or is that something you would change? We're not looking at that officially now, it's a, it's a site plan review and a conditional use.
Sure.
But just, uh, curious if that's the look you're moving forward with, or would that be modified?
We, we're incredibly flexible, you know, we're, we're self-storage people. We, we used to have our panel on everything and now we have stum and stucco. It's just what's required and, and we adjust and go with it. So if that's what the city wanted, no worries. Uh, if they'd like, you know, you, you can see from our portfolio that we have a, a variety of different looks. And, and if there's a different color scheme or a different direction, it's no, no worries, sir.
That's outside of our purview here, but, uh, again, we talk a little bit more detail of the schedule. Obviously, your purchase probably is dependent upon this approval moving forward.
It is.
And I just don't know what time schedule you'd be purchasing and when you would anticipate breaking ground and have completion.
So the o- other contingency is one we're all totally well aware of, and that's the water issue. And so, uh, a- and we're prepared to step in and participate in that a- a- as well. So with that unknown still out there, if we have water from the site, we will, uh, break ground within ninety days. So that's basically what, we've got the system. We've, uh, obviously got plenty of local concrete contractors that are ready to come up here. So we get that in ground. In, in the meantime, we've already ordered our steel. We, we do all, all of our steel engineering in-house, so we can, there, there's not gonna be any delay there. We've got local lenders who, uh, for, for this size of loan, this is, you know, a forty-five day close. So, uh, then when we start construction on a project this size, uh, weather, uh, considered, uh, we're looking at, at somewhere in the neighborhood of a thirteen to fifteen month completion cycle, uh, depending on weather. But right now, full-size self-storage facility under the absolute best circumstances, eleven months. So that's flat and dry, which we don't get that very often.
Mr. Smith, wanna come forward?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Frederick.
Uh, good evening, members of planning commission staff, Eric Steph, twenty-four thirty-five. Research Parkway, Colorado Springs, Colorado, eight oh nine two zero. Uh, I am a principal of Matrix Design Group, and we've been involved in this project since the beginning as it relates to the design components, civil and planning and those kinds of, uh, items. You know, to address the comment about, are we gonna start over with drawings and such? The answer is absolutely not. Uh, when I talked with Lee, you know, he, the concept works. He wants to stick with the concept, he wants to move forward. We had submitted drawings, including the water plants, uh, to the city, and we had comments that we received. And it was at that point, uh, due to the various reasons that Michael had mentioned, uh, that we were asked to kind of just stand down and put on hold. Uh, so our plan is to pull the drawings that we have, pull out the comments that we have with the city, review those comments, meet with the city, go back through them again, update the drawings and get them resubmitted. And I believe that that is all going to happen very quickly, uh, pending, of course, uh, approval of the cup amendment or a cup extension. So, um, I've worked with Lee in the past on other projects. Uh, I know Lee is excited about this project and has told me that he wants to move out as quickly as possible. All development has issues that have to be worked through. Uh, you mentioned a number of them, CDOT, for instance. We will have to get a CDOT access permit. There is an access permit that's there today. Uh, however, we have to amend the access permit for additional trips. The nice thing is you can have a lower intense, intensive use, other than maybe assisted living, uh, as it relates to trips. In fact, this probably still has less trips. Uh, I did the original traffic study myself. Uh, I don't remember all the numbers, but I think we're looking at somewhere around a hundred trips a day is what we're talking about. So, you know, very, very low volume of trips. So we understand that the traffic impact study will have to be revised, will have to update trap, you know, uh, the traffic numbers and the existing volumes and those types of things. That'll be part of the process. We'll have to go back to CDOT, we'll have to work through the access permit process. But the nice thing is all the improvements that are needed are already out there on state highway twenty-four. There's already a deceleration lane, left turn into the site to head into the site from eastbound, or sorry, westbound toward the. Uh, there's already enough asphalt for a right turn lane B cell heading eastbound on twenty-four. So there are no highway improvements really that need to be made, uh, to handle, uh, this traffic that we're talking about. And they all fall within, those improvements that are out there today are all within the CDOT access code and, uh, requirements, uh, for this road class. So I don't believe that this is, uh, the CDOT issue is a big issue. I think that's just working through the process, like most developments do. Uh, if we had a more intensive use there and a lot more trips, that would be a different discussion. But as far as self-storage, and that's one of the things, uh, not only, you know, and I think it was a great question that you asked about, where else in the city can this go as a permitted use? There really aren't any. Uh, so, you know, that's what makes this a really good site for self-storage is because of the access that we have and that we have to work with at CDOT and such. It's a low intensive use. You know, another big box store, we'd have a big problem, you know, as it relates to trip. So I, I do not believe CDOT is gonna be a hurdle. Uh, from a drainage perspective, uh, we're required to follow the drainage criteria manual. Uh, and we had a drainage report that was completed previously and submitted, uh, with comments. So we will once again pull that back out. We'll make sure that we meet the city code and requirements related to the drainage criteria manual. And then we'll go back through the process. This does not drain the CDOT right away. Uh, this drains to the creek. That seems to make sense, I think, uh, just with the geography. So we'll work with CDOT once again, uh, and, you know, the application we're requesting, really, they wanna review the drainage report. They wanna make sure the flow isn't coming to the state highway. It'll be evident that it's not. So that's really not a big issue. Uh, from a water perspective, we have water right across the street. We had talked to CDOT before about a utility permit. Um, I've talked with Global Underground before as one of the possible contractors who would actually do the boring uh, for the, uh, water main across the highway. Uh, it's very typical in this day and age, you know, so it's a construction technique that is, uh, pretty remarkable, actually. And so I have all the confidence in the world that, you know, physically we can do it. I also know that we'll be able to get the permits from CDOT. Uh, the assisted loading facility that sits just down the street, uh, next to, uh, what used to be Tweeds, but the brewery, uh, the East folks. Uh, we had to bring a sewer line across, uh, for that, uh, use and take it over to Walmart substation, and that was all directionally drilled. Uh, it worked out great, and so it's not uncommon, we've done it with the park. Walmart did it with the park, bring, uh, water across the highway. Um, so once again, I think it's just a matter of working through that process. Uh, I forget what the other question was. Yeah, I, I think those were the main topics that you raised. I'm more than happy to answer any questions, but, you know, we're ready to go. And I know as soon as Lee and, you know, we get this, uh, conditional use extension in place, Lee's gonna be hammering on me to be finished, uh, yesterday. Uh, but that's pretty typical in our landmark. So I'm happy to answer any other technical questions that might have. Um, I have a lot of history on the project, I know it well, and.
If you could just kind of give us a linear step-through of the timelines, it seemed like there's a lot of sequential steps, having to get the permits to do the boring, do the boring, get the water. And then it sounded like you wouldn't begin construction until the water was in place and, um, so how's that all gonna stack up in time?
Yeah, I, and Lee, you can correct me if I'm wrong here. We'll work on this on a parallel track. So we'll be working with CDOT on the utility permit, on the access permits, and all of that at the same time, along with the city process and all the drawings and plans. So I suspect that it'll be a 30- to 45-day process from the time that Lee tells us go to the time that we're resubmitting documents. You know, we've updated the traffic report. We've updated the drainage report as we needed to. We've updated updated our drawings related to any comments that we received from the city. Of course, we're going to meet with the city, you know, early on and go through those comments to make sure that we have captured everything and we know what needs to be done and have a game plan. I don't want to, I don't want to update drawings that turn around and submit and they say, well, that's not quite what I meant. We want to try to get it right the the first time, or at least 99% or 95%, right? But we'll be working with CDOT at the same time. I believe that as long as plans are approved, we have a utility permit in place and that the funding and and how the water line will actually be built by whom and the contracts, contractors in place, that may be enough for Lee, I'll let him speak for himself, to go ahead and say, hey, I'm ready to break ground on the on the storage facility. And both projects would move concurrently together. I think the build timeframe on the water line is probably 60 days max, would be my guess. So we're not looking at months and months and months and months to build that water. But I think the biggest thing for Lee, speaking for him, is having that assurance that the water line is going to be in.
Lee Frederick with Uplow speaking again. It's actually similar dynamic that we had out on Powers Boulevard in Colorado Springs. We didn't have water to the site and it had to be brought there. And until we got verification that there was easement that connected to water and had a price on what it was going to take to bring it there, we would not proceed. But once we got the commitment from the other landowner, we got verification from the city of Colorado Springs, or there might have been a different water district. I can't remember. Yeah, yeah, CSU. And so from from, at that point, we did proceed. So the water had not been delivered to site yet, but the the method for delivery had been clearly established and we proceeded. And I anticipate doing the same thing with this site.
So maybe to answer your question, or maybe the other question you were trying, or maybe you asked, I don't know. You know, from a timing perspective, it's probably six months, I'm guessing, maybe to the day he says go, to the day that we have all our permits and everything in place. Generally, I would say longer, but we've already done so much work that we're not starting from zero. We've done a lot of work. It will not take a long time to run through these revisions and updates. Really, the biggest thing that we don't control are the review time periods. And I'm not necessarily speaking about the city. City has their review time periods. CDOT has their review time periods. And, you know, how many times do you have to, you know, do the dance and and go back and forth? That is why I'm thinking it's a six-month process. But, you know, in today's world, six months is pretty quick turnaround for everything we have to do. I wouldn't be that confident if we hadn't already done the bulk of the work. If we were starting from scratch, we'd be looking probably at eight to 100.
I had two sort of technical kind of questions. First off, one of the things you mentioned, there is, there is an existing access permit for Troll Road? That's what I thought you were just saying. Yes, CDOT says to, I read them to say to the contrary. CDOT will require an access permit to record the currently undocumented access, your MP 26.68, a private road known as Troll Road.
Yeah.
Undocumented access doesn't sound like a permit.
I have a copy of an access permit. You know, so I'll have to dig in my files and find that. But, you know, the that property has had access. There's not an A-line. I mean, there's a break in the A-line there, which is their access line. Otherwise, they wouldn't have allowed that access. And and, you know, legally, they have to provide access. So I I don't, I don't think they're in a situation where they could deny access. But but that's a legal matter that I'd leave to legal folks if we have to go there. But I mean, if that were the case, the city, frankly, wouldn't be able to access the live station technically. Because
The city tries to police that sort of thing a lot unless it's brought to their attention, but
Well, I'm just saying, you know, the city uses Troll Road, you know, so technically, if there was no access, anything, so.
I don't really comply that they are questioning whether access could be granted. It's just they're saying, according, I guess, according to their research, they didn't have record of it.
Also, let me ask, the water, water coming in, is any of that, who are the owners for whom you have to get permission for or easements for?
They are, they are partners in this deal with Michael. So all of the, they're, they're all related parties. So from an easement perspective, that's not going to be an issue.
There's no unrelated party whose permission we need in order to put the water line in?
That's correct. I mean, the only unrelated party is the two, is the city of Willough Park and getting approval on drawings, and then the second, CDOT. But that's just working through the process. But as far as property owners go.
That's his question.
Yeah, there's
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I did notice on one of the site plans, there was a red box about the access to a highway, but there's also a box around the stream that, and I think there were some improvements. Any comments on, discuss that for us?
We can, we can go as deep as maybe you want to. What I would say is, you know, once again, there are development standards and requirements and code that has to be followed for any development in the city of Willough Park. And we will have to follow what those standards and codes require. So, you know, whatever, whatever improvements, whatever the code requires, those are improvements and things that we'll have to take on.
CJ, were those new requirements from the original?
Yeah, I can, I can pull that up again here.
I can have the reader from here.
Yeah. Well, I have a different slide that will. So this slide here is the most recent comments on this extension request. The first one, Kim Wiley, our utilities director. The second two is from our public works. So regarding Fountain Creek, this is the comment here. So like he was alluding to, you know, those requirements are outlined and they would just have to follow the city with the park stormwater master plan. So.
There is something, I was going to clarify, it's in the comment from Kim. The original request was denied. Didn't, so that didn't sound like there's no, it wasn't, you didn't get to, we didn't get the design work done, but he just said it was, the request was denied.
The request for the the request for the water bore. So it wasn't actually like denied, you will never build this. The utilities department issued comments and never received back any additional plan set. So, you know, as far as timelines go, that CDP, it was inactive for a year, therefore it was, you know, inactive. So I just think that was a verbiage.
Any other questions this morning? All right, thank you, Mr. Smith.
I do want to ask on your behalf, if you don't mind, one question of Mr. Frederick. You will appreciate this. Have you had a chance to read the ordinance that established all the conditions of approval with the initial granting of this entitlement back in 2018?
No.
Okay, we can, we can get you that.
Okay. The conditions still apply.
And where, that's staff's recommendation, if you wanted to.
Pages of conditions.
It's, it's it's not short. It's pretty detailed. And I believe it was in your packet. And, yeah, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, I don't think it would be inappropriate to literally read through them here and now, make it clear to us, make it clear to them conditions upon which we are considering approval of this extension.
I can do that for you.
All right. And we can surely do that. I will say that, you know, we understand there are conditions of approval that weren't in code. And we will meet those conditions. And so we have no question. That's the process. So we can go, go through them if you want. That's fine. But we already concede that we will have to address those conditions.
Thank you.
While I was there, I mean, we're in our package, and we had a chance to review them. I want to make sure that they're okay, understanding what what we're considering here. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open the public hearing at this point. We've heard from everybody in the audience. Anybody online, if you can raise your hand? Is Ken online?
Except for Ken.
I know if he's just here on us or not. But nobody else online, so no other comments from the public? Is Ken able to, has Ken been able to talk? Is he?
He's a panelist on Zoom, so he can unmute anytime he would like.
Okay, good. Let us know if you have something to say, Ken.
Okay, I'm, I'm here. I'm still here.
Still awake. Very good. Well, seeing no one coming forward, nobody online, we'll close the public hearing at this point. There's no real need for rebuttal, but you have that opportunity. Fair enough. Okay, bones. Any further discussion? Comments, questions?
I guess I'll comment then. I'm very much aware that we're dealing with the extension of these two applications tonight. And we're not reviewing plans over again. But at the same time, I think there are valid concerns addressed by staff and CDOT. And I just wanted to see staff nod their head in agreement that those things will be taken care of through the process.
I can kind of touch on the process. I know, I mean, we do have new planning commissioners and as far as process goes, so and when we get a conditional use permit like this, it's the same thing if it were to come in brand new. So they already have done this conditional use permit and, I mean, in-house, we call it the preliminary site plan. So that's preliminary drainage report, preliminary drainage plans, preliminary landscaping, things like that. So that was all done in 2018. So if this application does get approved, they submit to us the final site plan. So those, those are the construction documents. So this is the, you know, full updated traffic impact study, the final drainage report, final drainage replant, final landscaping, elevations, renderings, you know, everything is the final portion. So our job as staff is to go through that ordinance and make sure every single one of those conditions of approval, or, you know, conditions of approval is met along with all of our codes and the engineering specifications. Our public works department takes care of that. So that's what we can promise you, Larry.
Sounds good, sir.
Yeah, thank you.
Just a comment, I'm encouraged about the anticipated schedules, completion. Things are about to move forward. I'm reluctant to give approval tonight. We'll come back in two years and grant a similar or entertain a similar request. But I think at that point, patience gets worn out. So if we're going to move forward with this, I'm encouraged by what the applicants has communicated to us tonight.
Yeah, it feels like we're still burning off the COVID backlog. But, you know, clearly you can get the sense that I'm speaking to ourselves as much as I'm speaking to the applicant that, you know, we don't want to approve plans that'll have a low likelihood of coming to fruition. You know, come to us when you're ready. But that said, you know, financing, the engineering, seems like their employees can move forward. So I guess I'm comfortable with it.
Questions coming? I guess on the same, on a similar, on a similar basis, I guess I'm comfortable with one more, one more try at this for for a couple of, actually, it doesn't have to be two years. We could do it for one year or two. It just says there is an extension. So we could, it literally tells me differently. I think we could do for a different period of time if that was the concern. I'm not sure.
But their build timeline to fit with.
No, it doesn't have to be. They just, they just need to get, they need to get to the point they can get a ZDP and all the rest of the construction. They don't have to build anything. Or they don't have to, they, they, they start building.
Don't have to finish.
So can you repeat that again? You said they don't have to finish in the two years?
They don't have, no, no, no. They just, they just have to get the paperwork so they can get a ZDP so they could start. I believe they might have to turn over a shovel full of dirt with all the permission in place to actually.
Yes, as far as code is concerned with the extension request in our code, so they have to receive a extension when a zoning development permit or building permit had, or they don't, I'm sorry. They do not have to receive an extension if a zoning development permit or building permit has been issued and still deemed valid.
It's a ready-made shovel. Yeah, they're authorized to put the shovel, and that's good enough.
So our zoning development permits are valid for one year. So they could, you know, receive a final site plan approval, which is would, you know. And then after that date that they receive approval, then they have an additional year to construct or begin construction.
Leaving these things open indefinitely is, is a bad idea. Other we don't have a whole lot of service commercial space available to. This use may or may not be attractive as a neighbor to the next guy who wants to look at it. But just having things up in the air and not knowing it can affect the desirability to develop for other ones. This is near the entrance to our city. It's important that it be done well and done right. And if it's not going to be done, that you give an opportunity for another use to be identified and proved. Or or not, or not approved because it's not, because it's a matter of, a matter of right. It's, it's most uses in the service commercial are. Okay, hopefully we'll be looking for motions. There is not one.
I'll move that the planning commission find that the extension is warranted and recommends that the city council grant a two-year extension of the conditional use permit site plan subject to all the conditions and dimension standards specified with the original approval.
Second.
Very good. We'll call vote, please.
And it was Mr. Newcomb that seconded?
Yes.
Thank you. Vice Chair Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Newcomb?
Yes.
Mr. Kennedy?
Yes.
Mr. Larson?
Yes.
Mr. Hoyne?
Yes.
And Chair Hertzfield?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That concludes our public hearings for tonight.
And for the record, while we still have the applicants in the room, and just for your all edification here, the city council public hearing for this request is scheduled on Thursday, October 3rd at 6:30 in the same room.
It's just two reports. Anything for staff?
Yes, I just wanted to note that last night, related to our code project, Jennifer Gardner and I attended the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting. And we were talking about the subdivision process and how their review and recommendation related to open space and park space dedications are currently reviewed. So we are looking at drafting clear language around that whole process, since right now it's buried under supplementary standards. That really irritates me. So, but that's part of what we will be bringing forward at a certain point is, is hopefully clarifying that, making it much easier to find and for the developers and staff to navigate that whole process. So that was, that was the outcome of that meeting, or at least the the big one. So it was a lively hour and 20-minute discussion. So it was, it was interesting. It was good. And then I guess the other thing to note is the city is currently without a city engineer on staff. We will be getting recruitment for that here in another week or so. The good news is we have contracts with several other engineering companies in place for on-call engineering services. So we do have resources available to definitely keep development flowing and moving during the the interim year.
Very good. My, our next meeting is then the 10th?
26. Twenty six.
Oh, this one, I'm jumping out. I'm sorry.
Um, and we are looking at work sessions on both, uh, September twenty sixth. And then October tenth, uh, because we did not have a development case, uh, come in. There is still, um, a possibility of a flood hazard development permit out there, but we do not have a, that, those have pretty quick notice requirements and such for your review. Uh, but that application is, is not ripe yet. So that's, that's kind of a wild word that's been hanging out there for a while. Um, but otherwise we're looking at, at work sessions here for your, your next two meetings.
Yeah, it doesn't sound like it needed just for quorum planning. I won't be here on the twenty sixth.
Okay. Well, we still need a, a quorum for work sessions, but, um, that's okay.
We have better tenders, so.
I do have a follow-on question from last meeting. There was talk about what it would take to get, uh, a lea- to alleviation from the. Uh, requirement to build sidewalk, the, the Fred's towing out, um. Down Highway twenty four. You know, last week I drove, I drove over there or I drove around, I was getting gas there, looking. There isn't another sidewalk within half a mile.
Well, yeah, but it, it facilitates walking from picking up some concrete and carrying it to the gas station.
Yeah, and, and let me.
The only thing.
So, so let me help you out.
So I'm just curious what the process is to get that alleviated if, if.
Well, part of the reason you're not seeing other sidewalk in that area, um, uh, Bruin Sciences Institute is a great example. And what was approved with Fred's towings, original conditional use permit was payment of fees in lieu of building the sidewalk. Um, and they got the price put together on that. And, um. There was an expletive, I believe, um, or displeasure and, uh. And I'll just build that sidewalk was, was kind of the consensus that they came to. And, um, there is also just that. Like you're talking about, it's like, there's nothing else out there. But if you don't get the sidewalks upfront or the fees in lieu of actually constructing the sidewalk. Then it's potentially a, a cost to the city, but it's really something that should be borne by the developer. So the applicant in this situation does have options.
Um, that's what I was really my question.
Yeah, they're.
What the options would be?
It's kind of like root canal or pull the tooth, you know, I mean, in terms of the, the pain point, I think, for, for. The applicant on this particular issue.
Is there a fund or a known place where fees in lieu of sidewalks goes? Does it sort of might put other sidewalks in and near.
To the best of my knowledge.
Essential areas and things where there's missing.
To the best of my knowledge, there is, but there's also the issue of where it's collected is where it needs to be used. Um, since that's what you're offsetting is, is in that particular.
I'm sure there's plenty of sidewalk improvements or extensions that could, could, this town could use. So that, those fees in lieu of would be, in my mind, an asset to the city as well as a benefit to the developer. So.
The bottom line is the applicant has options.
Okay. Just, all right, thanks. That helps. Appreciate that.
So that's all I had for you this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other comments, questions this point? It's seven forty-five. Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.
So. Right, thanks, everybody. Talk to y'all later.
You get that.
Hang, hang, we're still.